Welcome. Okay, got a pretty simple agenda today. Everybody wants to look at it. Somebody's make the, ready to make a motion.
I do need to make an addition to the agenda. I would like to add hiring and election assistant who will be trained in the election. And then take over the position of deputy clerk.
Yeah, I have a motion need to approve the agenda.
With the addition?
Yes.
Were there any other additions? Where would you want to put that?
How about first?
Okay. So after public comment? I'll second that motion.
Say that again.
I said I would second the motion with the addition of. And I guess since Jim's busy, he'll say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Get them out of the way. Let's have some public comment. Anybody have any they'd like to share today?
I want to publicly thank you, the missionaries here to work in the cemetery and got some sheets I printed out going one by one by one. Through the cemetery and saving us a lot of time and. A good thing.
I have three individuals that are in the wrong place that I know of that may or may not be.
Well, I got to a hundred yesterday and my basically weren't even in the book anywhere, though I see not. So, um, I was kind of made to a hundred.
I know that there, there's a gap. There's a gap probably between twenty, twenty and twenty, twenty-three that I don't think many named for hundreds in the book.
Yeah.
So we're.
I'm fixing everything. So I'm going through and I'm double checking everything. So I do probably twenty, about twenty when I go down there. And then I go back and I cross-reference it. I have an old book that I went and got from the libraries. Um, and then Deanna's printed out, um, the veterans list for me, a numerical list and also a alphabetical list. So I'm cross-referencing everything. Um, correcting dates, spelling. So that one stone, I can only go off of what's there. But the stone, one through a hundred, I have done corrections on it maybe. Um, and I'm just going by the stone. Like some say they're in A, but their stone says they're in D. Well, we're gonna have to go by the stone because I'm in the old, old, old section, the eighteen hundreds. And I would assume that they're buried behind the stone that they are. So we're just flipping letters and some some spelling errors, dates within a year. I'm fixing all of that. I'm doing the work. She's doing the entry.
She's doing the next thing, which is that real.
I was just gonna ask if you've seen what she's entered into the.
That's what those are.
Yeah, she printed it all off for me.
Great.
And the two books there.
Yeah. And now we've kind of got a discrepancy between the two books. So that's something she's gonna have to figure out because they're not all in the numeric and the alphabetic, the reports, they're not syncing.
I could be, they have all the data, the same data, but for some reason they're not bringing them the same stuff.
Yeah. So I thought it would be easier to go numerically. I could get more done instead of having to look up the name and flip and flop. But I found out yesterday that that's not the case because they're not in, they're not all in there. So.
This is a public comment. I want to move on a little bit. I do thank you for that. Any other public comment? Yes, Joanne?
Yes, I want to let everybody here know that, um, we got twenty mounds donated by Church Street Market, which were planted yesterday. I'm getting, I've got another twenty donated today by the Village Market. And I'm getting another twenty. I hear from the race tonight. So when you see the mounds, it's the Village Market and Church Street Market. And I saw this show there.
So another dairy do request is coming in.
Sorry.
All right. Any more public comment? Anybody have anything? All right. Well, we'll give an opportunity at the end again too. So, all right. Uh, we had one addition to the agenda. Then it was about Jenny and Aleah.
All right. Um, I had my deputy do some research and she came up with, uh, MCL one six eight point two nine, which says a township clerk has the authority to appoint assistants as needed to help carry out the provisions of the election law. Um, for township board's approval and election assistant to, for an election assistant to be compensated, the township board must approve the position and fix the salary. Scope of duties, the assistance authority is limited to the election duties assigned by the clerk, such as assisting with voter registration. Uh, an appointed assistant must take and subscribe to the oath of office before beginning their duties. And there's a little bit more to that, but, um, what I would like to do is hire Jenny Cornia as an election assistant with the board's approval at twenty dollars an hour with a maximum of, of ten hours per week to be paid out of the election budget. And that would give her two or three months to train with Margaret. Um, ten hours a week as they have availability. And, um, that would get her well-prepared to switch positions later on so that she would become the deputy and Margaret would become the election assistant. And then Margaret would get work with her through the next election. Um, we're not sure if there's going to be a February election. There may not be unless the county puts something on the ballot or we put something on the ballot, but I don't think we're ready to put anything on the ballot yet. Um, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the hiring of Jenny Cornia for twenty dollars an hour, ten hours a week as an election assistant.
I will second that motion. Taking a decision before we go down there. No objections or? All right, um. Probably should do a roll call vote, hiring someone?
Sure.
So this is actually an appointment, right?
Yes.
Well.
Because she'll work directly for me. Yes. So Jim LaPue?
Yes.
David Cost?
Yes.
Christine Johnson, yes. Michelle Jackson?
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried.
Wait, five hundred.
Yes. Still carry.
I haven't told you that.
Difficult. All right. Are we okay with that then or?
Yep. That's all we needed. So we will start the working.
Yes. Congratulations. That's Jenny back there. Okay, we'll move on to number seven here and, uh, we'll start with some cemetery ordinance jargon. Um, kind of a little bit of a late addition. I put on everybody's things here. There's um, some procedures that he has been working on, um, simple things like transferring a cemetery deed. You think that'd be really easy to do and, you know, snags or anything, but we have literally not done it in a while. And I don't even know if we have a procedure in place, but this is.
I haven't seen one.
I know you had that book on your thing there. There may be some references in there, but.
Yeah.
Um, give everybody a minute to what goes over if you haven't.
Well, that really is separate from the ordinance.
Right, right. Um, I'm thinking these are just a discussion topic right now, kind of.
Okay.
Um, I, I think at some point we should approve them. I mean, we get to have a good solid policy. This kind of answers a lot of questions when people are in that process.
Just a point of order. If we were going to do policy and procedure, that should have been added to the agenda because the agenda is just for ordinance.
Okay, but we're still just discussing.
Yeah. We should probably add it to the agenda.
I don't think we've already approved the agenda. Will we amend the agenda? I don't know. Does anybody know?
End the agenda on the fly.
Okay.
Uh, again, though, I think we, our, our agenda says we're gonna be discuss, well, says we'll be discussing the ordinance. Put anything on here.
You do that under that procedures.
Jim did something right.
Good job. I should read.
Okay, well, good then.
Should we do the ordinance first and then the procedures? That's how it's on the agenda, but it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, we can do that. I'm, I'm thinking that there's some things here in the procedures that will help us later a little more time than about the ordinance.
I agree.
Uh, it just has, you know, some good information. I think that we need to just be aware of.
Should we read it aloud or?
I, I could read it real quick if you want.
I, I heard.
I, I think we're gonna be okay. All right. Uh, this again is just some procedures and, um, policy that we're trying to make these instances kind of automatic and, you know, procedural, uh, like a routine type thing rather than every single time we do it, we're looking for the, you know, procedure to do it. So hopefully we get done with this, we'll have some reference of what we should be doing. All right, I'll go ahead and start here. Uh, number one, purpose. Purpose of this manual is to establish a clear and consistent policy and procedure for the legal transfer of cemetery deed ownership of the Clearwater Township. This policy ensures accuracy of cemetery records, maintains the integrity of township cemetery, and protects the rights of deed holders. Uh, two quick definitions. Cemetery deed is a legal that can be issued by Clearwater Township granting the right of burial and designated plots. The original deed holder is the individual whom the cemetery deed was originally issued. Transferee, the individual, or individuals who to whom the rights of the deed are transferred. Clerk's office are designated as the office responsible for maintaining cemetery records. Number three, policy overview. Clearwater Township allows the transfer of cemetery deed ownership in accordance with applicable local and state laws and in accordance with Clearwater Township ordinance number twenty-five cemetery ordinance. All transfers must be approved and recorded by the Clearwater Township Clerk's Office or Designee. Uh, eligibility to transfer or eligibility for a transfer, cemetery deed must be transferred under the following conditions. Original deed holder is alive and consents to the transfer. The original deed holder is deceased and the rights transfer by inheritance, probate, or affidavit of heirship. The transfer does not violate any township or cemetery regulations regarding plot, ownership, or use. Uh, number five, required documentation to prosper, process a transfer. The following documents must be submitted. A, the original deed holder, or A, if the original deed holder is living, completed cemetery deed transfer application, original cemetery deed, and a government-issued photo identification of both party, parties, no rise deed transfer agreement signed by both parties. Uh, if the original deed holder is deceased, certified copy of death certificate, copy of will or probate for order, or a no rise affidavit of heirship, original cemetery deed, government-issued photo ID of transferees, copy of birth certificate to show relationship to the deceased in accordance with Clearwater Township Ordinance number twenty-five. All right, procedure. Submit documentation. The applicant must submit all required documentation to the Clearwater Township Clerk's Office or Designee. Uh, reviewed by Clerk's Office or Designee. Clerk's Office or Designee will verify authenticity and eligibility of all documents. Approval or deny. The Clerk's Office or Designee will issue written notice of approval or denial within ten business days. Record update. Upon approval, the township records will be updated and a new deed will be issued in the name of the transferee. Number five, deed issuance. The new deed will be mailed or made available for pickup at the Clerk's Office or Designee. Fees. A transfer processing fee of twenty-five dollars shall apply. Payment must be made at the time of application by check, money order, or online by the Township Payment Portal, which is almost up in writing. It is up and running. Good, okay. Uh, play, plots may not be resold for profit. All plot usage must comply with Clearwater Township Cemetery Regulations. Clearwater Township reserves the right to amend this policy at any time. All changes will be posted on the Township's official website and publicly announced. Very good, V. This is her creation.
Yeah, thank you as well.
That is correct. There's an application of, applied of it. It's pretty kind of dry. Uh, basically all things required that I just read.
When he tracked him out.
The only, uh, thing that kind of stands out to me is you say the Clerk's Office or Designee. It kind of sounds in that wording like it's the clerk making the, the designee.
One, well, it's designated by Adam. I didn't take enough credit. I didn't take that because usually the Clerk's Office by, and historically is the one responsible for cemetery. So we kind of, yeah, that's voted in, in the township.
In the township.
They had, of course, it was you. Yeah, it was clerk's position. Um, but either way, it was voted in that way. So that, that makes it duty. But now that I'm the designee by the board, then it would be me. Uh, but you still hold the record. So it kind of makes it.
Right, yeah, we both have.
Great, very hairy to deal with. So the designee, I don't know, you know, could be a friend just used.
I was just thinking like appointed agent or something like that.
Yeah.
Instead of the.
It is kind of an appointed person. I mean, it could be appointed by you.
You were by the board for that.
Yeah, you could have, you could appoint your job. You could, you know, or the township board can appoint me or, you know, I mean, that's how. Whoever designed.
To have you pass the designation to the cemetery in our general.
Yeah. So I mean, I could wear it however, I couldn't use it.
Is that something you'd like me to change on this? Designee to appointee?
That was just a thought and.
Define it better. I don't know.
Well, you're, you're already appointed the deputies. You're just, this is one of your duties that are designated to you is the cemetery.
That's completely separate.
So when I don't come back next thing, um, they're gonna, but yeah, they're gonna have to figure it's gonna go back to the clerk because that's what was voted in prior. So then not tear out the clerk's identity of the designee.
Yeah, I think the next board would have to appoint somebody, not just the clerk, because in MTA, so it is not the clerk's duty.
But the board, previously historically.
But that was changed to you now. So it doesn't automatically.
But it's still the first, I think it's still the clerk. I mean, we'll have to hash that out of working here or something, but it, it was literally voted as the clerk's duties on, in the township.
When was that?
I don't know when we looked it up. I don't know what date it was.
Okay, so we would like to put, uh, a number three here in the policy overview. It'll say reported by, by the Clearwater Township Clerk's Office or appointed designee.
How about appointed?
Appointing.
Appointing.
Okay. Well. I think there was a couple of designees in there, but can these, uh, if we are interested in, uh, adopting this, we can say all the designees can be.
Everything will have to be turned over to the attorney for review before we adopt it.
And do you have, and do you have when the township approved, the date for the minutes where it was approved? That is responsible for the cemetery?
We don't know that exactly.
I don't know the date, but I did.
I've never seen that and.
Um, I saw it. I don't remember which one.
Yeah.
I think we did that. Our board did that.
I think it was when Melinda was in office.
No, we, we pointed you.
Oh, you pointed me. Yeah, I talked about, they're talking about when the clerk was appointed to handle, to manage the cemetery. And I think it was for Melinda. It might have been more.
And that would be a non-statutory duty. So it would be additional pay along with that.
But it's appointed to Dean.
Yeah.
She, yeah, she's giving additional. All right, so we'll change the designees to appointees. And then I guess today we'll be approving to send it to the attorney then, rather than approving it in order. All right, I'm okay with that.
Good job. I like it. It goes right in line with the ordinance. So I charge.
Well, um, yeah, this little thing here of the board motion to approve the cemetery deed transfer policy, but, uh, we'll hold off on that till it comes back to the attorney and tell you that it just won't be the right day. But, all right, so, uh, as far as the procedures go then, we'll I'll make a motion that with the designee to appointee changes, uh, we'll correct that and send it off.
Do we need a motion? Well, I don't feel any motion for that.
Well, we will for the ordinance, I'm sure, but I don't see why we shouldn't really. I mean, if we approve it, then it kind of becomes all of us rather than, you know.
All right, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve policy language, um, with the exception of designee corrected to appointee uh, for the purpose of sending it off to legal for review.
Nice letting that in.
All those in favor? Sorry, I didn't hear Jay.
Yes, okay.
Yes. All right, so I went ahead and printed a copy of the old ordinance. Assuming everybody is the soldier.
Yeah. I think the, the start of it is perfect. The title, the definitions, those are all great. Um, no question on those. Um, after that, there's a lot that talks about the township clerk, which, uh, we, we will need to change that because it's township clerk or designee or appointee, however. So that, that's gonna have to be included in that language, whomever the board authorizes or appoints. Because it, it does solely say the clerk in hand.
Okay. Do you have it marked out where?
Uh, just the end of all over the place, but.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe take them in order and I can strike them out and write in appointee or.
All right, so it starts in section three.
Okay.
Um, midway through the paragraph, the township clerk, however, is granted the authority to vary the force of restrictions of sales. So that would be, do we want to leave that up to the clerk or do we want that to be D's authority?
Well, it's, you have to have it as a, a board member or something of that nature because I'm not even gonna be here. So you're gonna, I'm, I'm not here after. So I mean, it's not gonna be the deputy chargers all the time, um, because I'm not holding it as that title.
Well, so I, I mean, if you say or appointee, then.
Yeah, yeah. But I think that's why they originally voted it to be the clerks because that's, I mean, that's whoever the office.
So in, instead of calling it, okay, the township clerk, the board's appointee. Township Board's appointee.
I don't know.
She doesn't want it to be the appointee. She wants it to be the, a board member.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think, I mean, I don't, well, I think that, I think there has to be a motion to change it from the original wording if we find that for the clerk. I don't think we just say, oh, the clerk's kind of fun playing her. I'm, I'm kind of doing it under, it's she's the old records. I don't have records necessarily, you know, paperwork. I didn't do it yesterday. I just don't think it can be changed like that because it was actually a a resolution or a motion that was passed.
Okay, we'll find out. That is, gotta find out.
Yeah, I was trying. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there's some question on that language. Maybe when we submit it to the attorney, they, they can clarify that.
Yes.
And we should provide them with when it was, um, approved by prior board.
Yeah, we gotta find that.
To clerk as one of her duties.
Um, another thing that I noticed was not in here is coverage. Um, in the MTA book on cemetery manage, management well, talks about if there's more than one cemetery in the township, you need to define the coverage because this would not apply to Saint Mary's. It would only apply to ours and that language needs to be in there.
Even though we don't own the other one?
Yeah.
We only own one.
I don't know. It's in the, it's a cemetery in the township. Does, does that matter?
I would think it would only.
It's a private one. I wouldn't think it would have any.
Okay.
So casually, um, involved in.
All right, if nobody thinks of the bubble, we will not add that.
So we need go through that to define who and how we appoint the authority to do, to carry out this.
Mm-hmm. And whether that language needs changed or not.
And to do that will need that, um, resolution that was approved by prior board. Right, just make up something that somebody else has already approved to.
And the prior board didn't, the prior board didn't even know that because they never said to me that that was my duty. Because in, in MTA, it says it's not the clerk's duty. It's the board's duty.
Yeah, I think it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't think that was the one.
You don't think it was when Melinda?
No, I think it was the one.
All right.
I think they are. Would it be in a resolution?
Um, who knows?
Don't think.
Do you remember, Julian? Do you remember, did Melinda get extra pay for cemetery duties?
Listen, I'll just point you to it.
So if.
She did a resolution in, in April of twenty twenty about the clerk and it was a computer. It was, um, FOIA and one other thing. And that, and that goes to get actually twenty thousand.
It was IT.
Nothing but cemetery. But all, all the years I've ever been there, it's always been a clerk's office. And you go and talk to the clerk and the deputy clerk will never, because they were always there.
Yeah. So yeah, that whole section is, is all about that. Uh, then in section five, um, section four, I thought looked good. In section five, um, in the first paragraph, it ends the sentence, uh, with the fee shall be paid to the township treasurer prior to interment and deposited in the cemetery fund. We do not have a cemetery fund.
Yep, we do not.
So that would be.
I think interment is spelled, isn't it? Internment? In their hand in there?
I think it's just internment. I don't know.
Anybody?
No.
It's just internment.
Okay.
Term. Okay.
So that language needs changed from cemetery fund to general fund?
Either that or even.
You know, we have quite a few plots that are still feasible. I really think it should be have a separate fund.
For what reason?
Um.
For what reason?
Make sure that the money that's being put into it is being sent for it. But I guess we spend a lot on.
Not really that rule. Yeah, that's not really.
That just means a, another budget. Just, that just means a, another budget.
Yeah.
Another, well, we don't have a budget.
I, I will say this though. That we have.
We will.
We're supposed to, we're, we're trying to get things in order so we do it right.
We will.
Um, we, we, we have talked about. Ground penetrating radar as a potential way to fix some of our issues that are there, uh, I think. My own personal thing, if we were to do that, we'd probably find a bunch more mistakes, which I don't know how we correct at that point. You know, you find someone buried somewhere and there's no marker and there's no record, what do you do?
I think there's a record, I think there's a record somewhere, I found a lot of them, um, Karen Amazon, is that? Amazon? Thought I was shopping, um. She has a lot on findagrade dot com or whatever it is, that I have a list going of. I don't have that information, so I think that there's people that know, trace the stone, you know. I think as long as we know where the body there, good, but we have lots that don't have stones, that are like, so there are potty there.
There's no markers whatsoever.
So for the marker, yeah, whatever, and the older ones are easier and you can. You know, poke them, but then do we pay the guy to come and probe them?
I think it would be beneficial because then you know, and if you, if you don't, then you know somebody's buried there, so you don't resell it. Because all these, I mean, you won't believe how many empty ones there are and you could resell them.
Yeah.
But the board of general are subject of the ordinance.
These are people that have been buried there from the eighteen hundreds, so more than likely.
Yeah.
Um, it's just vacant, so. You could resell it other than.
There is a law, is it the ordinance or is it just a law statute that I read that is there? If the deed owner is, has been deceased for forty years or more. And nobody has claimed that deed, but she probably had the color notice, I would do it the right way, I'm sure, you know. Um, to get, cause I think a lot of these people are handing them down and they're not transferring them. Cause I would come across a lot of that where the. Parents of, or the daughter from great great grandma that bought it back in eighteen forty two. You know, they've been handed down generation to generation, hell, you know, I'm the heir to this, well. Okay, do you have siblings? That's the first thing I ask, and they're like, well, yeah, I've got five sisters. Hmm, okay, this is what you're gonna do, cause we're not getting caught on, so I think that there's a statute or something that states. So we're gonna have to cross that at some point too.
Yeah, and exceptions to almost every.
I do believe that's all in here.
Yeah, I think that's a state statute, I don't even think that, yeah.
Good.
So, uh, the next paragraph, no burial space shall be opened or closed except under the direction and control of the township clerk, sexton or cemetery contractor. Um. Uh, isn't that just, yeah, a, a pointy, but that, we, we put all of that just. Under the authority of the sexton.
No.
That's, that's how we operated.
No, yeah, and it's wrong, because what's been happening is a, is a cluster, as long as they.
Okay.
Because we've got, now we've got.
No communication.
That they think we contact the sexton and they don't give us paperwork and that's why we're not finding bodies and headstones in the heaven or earth. So.
So you want.
All they have to work. It's, it's a mess, so no, they have to tell them there's a, there's actually um, a request for burial. That needs to be filled out and now that we're digital, we need a request for burial, we need a death certificate. It'd be great if we had an obituary, we can even take pictures and put them into our B S A program and then the transit, um, permit. So all that information or three of those things need, are needed and the other ones are just extra.
And on the form, I think all of these things you mentioned were on there.
And now we just gotta get a funeral home. All in line.
Yeah, another procedure would be a burial procedure and then have like. If you're a funeral home, here's your procedure and uh, you know, burying family, here's your procedure.
We've had, we've had families with stick holes. And buried with remains, blood ones remains and herbert boxes and plastic bags. In the middle of the night, in the rain. Yeah. Good God.
I think that machine would be amazing because of being out there for the best. Week or whatever.
It's about seven, ten thousand dollars, I think we.
When I talked, yeah, when I talked to him, but it's not just that though, and they'll come and do that, but they'll also do a burial thing. And they'll do a picture and you click on the headstone and they'll bring up the information and then loved ones from. Um, Canada, wherever, I don't know where the heck they're at now.
Getting back to the.
They can, yeah, but they can do it, so they'll.
That's. Okay, okay, um. So again, we're gonna be purging the township clerk and putting inserting board appointed. Person.
And that's things in Japan. And then the resolution says clerk, then we're gonna have to add another resolution. Passed and approved by the board that says it's not the clerk, that's.
I'll try to have that at least by November, I mean. I don't know if we're gonna have another one of these prior to that, but please by November, I mean, have that binding somewhere.
That's a couple of it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so that's a question throughout that, that whole appointee and clerk thing, but um.
So that's.
Moving on to section eight.
Say one thing, please, I, I see on your agenda there. Is no green burial? Are you aware of what that is? It's just written in a room and.
Yeah, no, no caution.
Is there an ordinance or anything, the procedures in place now, what is allowed to date up or what they don't contract the township? I don't know if there's an actual procedure.
There goes on all the time. You know, ashes are probably, you know, coming down rapid river, just about anywhere you can possibly imagine, I'm sure.
See, these are literally the bodies, was no. Oh, without.
Yeah, yeah, they don't have to be buried, I think even.
It's. It's quite the.
There's a lot of.
It's like a whole different.
Uh, lining condition.
Yeah, it is.
Like to speed up.
Yeah.
There on the, uh, on the green burial thing, there's a few cemeteries in the state that allow that.
Uh huh.
Uh, but there's some requirements for it and some of the reasons why not to allow it is, um. Because there, there's no regulation about the deaths and they're afraid of critters and there were some places that were concerned of contamination of the groundwater and. That sort of thing, or even collapse possibly of the, of the ground itself, so.
Yeah.
So we just, it wasn't in the previous one, so we left it up, we.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um.
And just one other thing real quickly on that, on that abandonment of the, of the lots out there, that's in the Michigan, um. Uh, Cemetery Act.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, do you think we should add that to be one of the regulations that we do not entertain green bearers?
That might be, yeah.
I think it's right in section seven, green firmly there, so not permitted in Clearwater Township Cemetery.
Okay, what, what line is that?
Section seven.
Yeah.
Just allow the.
Oh, okay, it's all by itself, just sitting out there, no, no one.
Yeah, and the other cremains shall not be scattered in Clearwater Township Cemetery, and I think most cemeteries do not allow. Um, scattered cremains because the. Landowners own above ground.
You mean?
They own the ground.
Oh.
This winter burials as well, I'm. Not sure if we do that. I don't think people do it.
No, and it, it does say it's up to him, I think.
Well, it says that no, that won't occur without prior consent, I don't think.
That lands the deed donors on the low ground in the township.
Yes.
So we could make an exception if we wanted to, if it was very mild when it was possible for him to do it, he might do it.
Yeah.
A thing would be acceptable.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
My dad died three months ago, he was cremated. Our plan was to sprinkle the ashes in the ocean. Now this is just the ocean. So we find out you gotta be two miles offshore. And. Okay, we can handle that, we all have boats, it's no big deal to do that. But I was shocked to find out that the reality of it is you gotta be two miles offshore. But then I learned it's also the most violated law in America.
Oh, yeah.
Because people sprinkle ashes wherever they want, so. For Michigan law, I don't know if you could just sprinkle them in the Ratchet River and let them fly.
Yeah, I don't.
But as far as the, providing that service, the few, the cemetery that my sister wanted to. Put his ashes in, in Florida. They have a community area where you could sprinkle the ash. You get a plaque in his name. And per individual, cause a lot of times with cremation. Grandma died three years before grandpa. They throw all the ashes into one box. And they try to get two for one is with the funeral directed dome, so it's one person that, so it's twenty five hundred bucks for the community ashes to be sprinkled. It's six thousand if you wanna have the urn put in a location in, in the cemetery.
That's why we don't live in.
So I, I, I think really investigating, if you what you gotta do for now, but I'll do it for you, okay, I'll go online and really investigate. Because financially. If, if it's doable. And you can provide that service to people and they will pay, I don't know, whatever they will pay, I mean, I gotta figure that out. I'll look and, and for now, just proceed as you're gonna proceed, but it's quite an interesting topic that really over.
We, we've discussed too at different times of potential vault. You know, a lot of people do that, but that's a long way down the road here, I think.
So I've just been kind of skipping through to the areas that I. Saw needed, where, but so like if, if I'm jumping over something that you saw needed change. Don't be afraid to go back, but um, looking at cemetery regulations in section eight. Um, there is no, uh. There's no hours open to the public listed there. And I know that that's been a complaint that there have been. Parties going on in the cemetery at night, but we don't have any hours set. So. Do we want to add that in there?
Okay.
Right.
You can have a party though.
I, I lived there two years right down the street and I have never seen one party.
No? Oh, I've heard about.
Probably in Nevada.
No, I've never, I've.
They go up on the.
Okay.
Is there one?
The road up the hill.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, I've seen the bottles up there.
Good to know.
People go on this, I say they'll never see a graveyard too, there's always.
It's kind of.
For, for it out.
They're above one, but I've never once seen a party there.
Nobody at night running around the cemetery?
Okay, so do we wanna install some?
Maybe that's doubles night, there might be, but.
Some cemeteries, if you can go by, anytime to take a look, it's okay.
Yeah, I think that would be upsetting to somebody to get there and it's closed.
Well, it's kind of hard to close it when you don't have an attendant to close it.
True.
Right.
No gate, no.
Yeah.
Basically, that's the road to get up there, you know.
Right.
I mean, if you do post hours that it's open to the public and then you do find out that they're hanging out there. Then you can do something about it, but if you don't have it in there, you can't do anything.
Well, that's another job though, now you gotta, but you enforce it and our law enforcement doesn't enforce anything anyway, so. Good luck.
Right.
Okay, I noticed in section nine, the first sentence, there was another township clerk needed lined out, so. Um, again, and I'll go through and do that throughout.
Well, I, I just wanna add to that, so we should come on through to a capital resolution, should have it in fact. It is, it was.
Could it be the addition of authorized.
Then we would add again or.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Most of the ornaments done before. Uh, twenty twelve, I think.
Yeah, it's just twenty twelve, I have original.
Was it the original one, say about the clerk?
Yes.
Let's get our backup.
This one came, all came from the original one.
Bear permit issued by the township clerk.
Interesting. That makes me think it was older than twenty twelve, that's quicker than this, it's like thirty thirteen.
Well, I know the. The former clerk. Went through and found many items that she was actually charged to do that were not. Her duties and she chose not to do the additional duties, and so that's why we kind.
So everything got changed to the, what Joanne was talking about, the twenty twenty. Resolution to only give her extra duties that involved. The three things. And so cemetery was not included in that.
But it's then prior ordinance from twenty twelve?
Um, all, all the references to the clerk were from the Friday.
So it's not prior order, it's my concern.
I guess, we, we assume that that was the procedure in the office.
Yeah. Yeah.
My concern is, is that you don't have a, a point here, designate you that's gonna do it. The cemetery isn't something you need to say, I'm not doing it, cause I have a feeling that's, I have no last clerk.
Would that.
I'm just not doing it and then we have bodies that are buried there, so it's not really something you need to say. You know.
Uh, but you can actually, because it's right here in the M T A book on cemetery management. About the clerks not being the one, it is the board.
I just think that somebody should be designated.
And, and yes, absolutely, the board appoints a board member to be, oh, but that person has to.
We can.
You know, accept that.
Of the twenty twelve.
Okay, so we got a little work to do on this, it looks like.
Well, I think that we should take the prior ordinance and we should take that with the new ordinance and have our.
So, uh, according to M T A. It does say the township clerk position has long been associated with township cemetery management responsibilities. Michigan Township Boards previously also served as the local board of health and that's something that we don't need to talk, but. Uh, M C L one two eight dot six one and three thirty three dot two four six assigns the responsibility of overseeing and managing township cemeteries. To the township board as a whole. There however, is no statute assigning all cemetery record keeping or other duties specifically to clerks. Absent a designation by the township board or law that someone other than the township clerk is responsible for such duties. These responsibilities often fall on the township clerk without that being. Their actual duty.
It's just, it's in the ordinance, so it's in a prior ordinance.
I did some, I swear.
So even though that is in, in M T A, I mean, it's in an ordinance, so we would have to.
Michigan has a pile of law.
We would have to find, um, we would have to find like a resolution that we move that.
Yeah.
But we have a designate, so again, if it has clerk or designate, because say that.
I, I would like to see a change to township board or does, doesn't.
You're not the clerk. Who's to say the next person that comes along, who is the clerk? So here's not what I'm receiving.
Here's something to. Even my appointee, thanks Frank. Um, the authority of an appointee receives authority and duties from the appointing body or official. A designate receives temporary authority delegated from a specific higher ranking official. So basically, I'm a designate under the clerk right now because I'm a designate, I don't think I was appointed.
I do.
Yeah, or we're appointed by the board.
By the board.
Okay, so I'm gonna call.
So why do you think that?
Hmm, I'm gonna call it the township board's cemetery appointee instead of the clerk.
Okay.
So. The township boards.
Yeah.
Cemetery appointee that includes us all as. In charge.
And we're gonna run this path, the attorney, so the, the attorney thinks that it's in conflict with, um. With what was passed before, then we might have to have something in between prior ordinance.
So like, so when somebody comes to buy a. Anybody?
It's the treasurer, but anyways.
I do.
But.
She pays the bills, she takes.
She can designate when I do that too.
So you can only come when somebody.
I mean, to collect the money, they, there's a drop off inside, outside, or they can come to my house.
But when there's a, when there's a ministry of assistance, there's everyone again, the treasurer can designate her to collect money as well.
Something.
You doing?
So I didn't have any questions on anything else, that is a.
Section twelve.
Okay, section twelve. Yes, I, that is my standard for the maintainers, yep. So the cemetery book is in my office. I, I, I stay at the.
That needs to be posted, hopefully, that would be.
Yeah.
We ran into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's weird.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's weird, but that's a bit of a really, you know, the prior ordinance shows that, um, the sales. Such ordinance shall be executed by the township board. So we might have some, we have to have something in between these to change the verbiage from the prior ordinance.
Again, that's in conflict with the resolution from twenty twenty, because that changes. The additional duties of the clerk that she gets paid for.
But this is a same answer you.
It is, it, it is, according to MTA, it says right there that. It's not a statutory duty and the clerk can be compensated for extra duties, including sunset. So that's not included in her extra duties that she's compensated for, which is me, um.
Do you do any of these things that you've been compensated for?
No.
So we might have to have something in between for the verbiage.
Well, I'm saying if we change that to the township board cemetery appointee rather than the clerk, it doesn't mean that the clerk couldn't be. Appointed to designate to be, it just says that the board will appoint the person.
Or if we got administrator, it wouldn't be, you know.
If they were appointed by the board.
Yeah, A- Angie was the one doing it before you took over.
She was appointed us.
No.
No, she wasn't appointed. Just kind of took that away. Okay, um. Any other comments or anything on this?
Any other questions on it?
We gotta. Probably, uh. Go through this and change.
Oh, I did have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Change the, uh, the wordage on the appointee and that.
Um.
And then maybe.
One, one other thing I just, I saw on my last page, I put a note in here that there is not a disclaimer of liability and responsibility. Uh, so the MTA, uh, sample. Says that you should have a disclaimer of liability and responsibility for anyone who is on the grounds. You accept personal responsibility for anything that happens to you while you're on that property. And, and that's not in here.
Well, how do you get somebody to sign that if they're going to visit?
Oh, it's just in our ordinance, so that's. So if something happens, they can't come back and sue us, because it's in our ordinance that you accept your own responsibility.
I'm sure our last bridge and guy would like that.
Yeah.
Man, like when I fall into the grave, it's like, I don't know.
Walking along and you fall in a six foot hole or something?
Trip over a stone that's.
Some over time.
A headstone that's buried in the ground.
So I had to go bury it and I.
Fall hit your head on another one and.
Get out of it.
You're gonna sue the township because they can't keep it maintained.
The disclaimer of, I'm sorry, disclaimer of liability is something you have verbiage on or?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is that something we should ask our attorney possibly?
I will see.
Well, could you just make that section seventeen and bump seventeen down to eighteen there maybe? That would be a good place for that, I would think.
Which is, what are you talking of?
Well, your, your liability thing there, just make that liability statement section seventeen and.
Okay.
And make seventeen eighteen.
Okay.
And that would be a good place for that.
Yeah, and anybody have any, uh, thoughts on? Liability disclaimer, or should we just let, uh?
I haven't left you no show me.
Go work that out.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
I don't remember, I don't remember where I saw it, I mean. It was long, it was very short, it was.
It was.
Jimmy, I, I know I was very concerned with him.
I suppose.
It was, I know there's a part there about the, um, trinkets and stuff being left on the graves.
Yes.
We're not really enforcing that, we're gonna do something like, how are we gonna, is it safe there, uh, right? How we're gonna enforce that, you know, what we're expecting out of it, because there's been a lot of debate on Facebook.
Does say, you know, how's trinkets and stuff like that, and it says at the end of the year, we will remove it all.
And I also thought that you're gonna put something there, ask if your sturdy material is not, no, it's not.
No lights, lights all over the place.
Yeah, it does say no lights.
So do we wanna be the? Bad guys and take, remove all that stuff?
Well, that's what it gives us authority to do.
Right, but I'm saying should we and, you know, is that appropriate to do?
I think reasonable attempt should be made to contact who's got a person.
I think every year you just mention, it's all, we're gonna.
We put that in the paper, then.
You know, maybe in the summer, sometimes you have that special agent figure that I fall. Otherwise, I mean, it would, I mean, either we go to break the phone up, because it's plastic. I don't see anything wrong with requesting whether like a solid material, something that's not breakable. They're gonna go statue there or something.
A lot of people do.
There's a lot of them there. Somebody leaves their Christmas, Christmas present, a birthday present, their son's grave over here.
Well.
Is it litter, does it, we call litter, bro?
Well, sometimes, I mean, you know. Wind blows and, you know, rain falls and.
I just think it's common sense and it's not, to me, it's not a big deal. I go there and pick up stuff all the time. When I'm visiting my family and I see some of those, I'll come over, I'll pick it up and put it in the trash can or. Put it back where it goes or, I don't know, I don't, I don't personally see that it's a. Huge thing unless they're overwhelmingly godly, but then that's another person to have to make. The call that you're gonna have to pay to make the call to, it's.
They have that. So are those items put on the gravestone or are they put on the ground?
There's a fishing pole leaning against the thing, there's.
Lot of beer bottles.
Beer cans, full beer, which I think there's some liability in that, leave them in full beer cans.
Yeah.
Or, yeah. I mean, if you put that out, it was a kids' year, and you're sorry. Drink your beer.
I assume.
Dump it out, and drink it with your buddy, and dump it out, and take it with you.
Like my uncles, they only allow like presents on each side, and they have to maybe down with a certain type of metal. But I know like if they have little bottles, like maybe the airplanes, I can put it on. Spend on it.
I just think there's liability off the alcohol.
Yeah.
I didn't know that for a while, no.
If having something that I could pass a huge for.
In the sample ordinance, there is a line that says disclaimer of liability and responsibility. The ordinance should make it clear that cemetery visitors are on the grounds at their own risk and the township assumes no responsibility or liability regarding cemetery visitors. The ordinance should also provide that the township and its officials, officers, employees and contractors. Is not responsible for and shall not repair or replace any damage stolen, vandalized or missing headstone, monument, mausoleum, urn or similar item.
I've got one family out there that this guy takes this angel and puts it on this other thing, you know? The people that are on this grave will take it back and put it over on the other one. It's constantly, it's happening like four times.
No, it's not a joke.
They do, in their math.
They're having a huge fight.
Quick, there has been times when mowers have damaged.
That's true.
And so that is, that I would think is unconscion. Board and their insurance.
There's one of those old ones that, you know, they got the steeple looking stuff and then they've got like the.
The ball on top of.
Yeah. There's a few of them, but the ball's laying down, because they're just old, so they have thirty two numbers. So I'm sure it wasn't damaged by more than that high, but they are kind of on par.
Yeah, they have, um, some big containments like the, or like the mausoleums and the bags, like of the, of the house. They have the tendency to like decor and things that have a purchase.
All right, uh, we've. Found a few corrections on here.
I don't know if they're correction, but there's some, I'm adding.
Uh, yeah.
Some questionable stuff.
The ju- changing from cemetery fund to general fund is a correction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the question, um.
Written.
Yeah, authorized agent or appointee or whatever. And then the addition, um, of the section seventeen for the disclaimer of liability.
Yes.
And other than that, I think it's ready to go to the attorney.
Hmm.
With those.
I, I think what I'll do is I'll clean up those things that we just talked about, like my notes here, um. Depending on whether or not we choose to have another special meeting before the next regular meeting or not, uh, at the next meeting. And have a corrected copy and we can all prove it then to go to the lawyer, how's that sound?
I would be willing to approve it to go to the lawyer with.
With the correction.
With the corrections that we've talked about.
Did you guys put a date on there for picking on stuff or no, is that?
October first. I think it's an October.
You shouldn't have a date.
Yeah, I thought it was October thirtieth, but I could be wrong.
I thought I read October first.
When the block sold that, maybe.
And the block just quit, killed that, they're not doing.
Wait, wait, you can.
He's waiting on Congress to approve it, but.
Yeah, we can wait a while for that. But that might be a good day, you know?
Yeah, I don't know, but I saw October first in America, it probably should be. Specific day, I.
It's October one.
Yeah.
Then. Where's that at, Danny?
Section nine in the section.
Okay.
Do you mind telling us on our website? So now it's even three years on, right, and so it's in the back, it's in right now, right?
I don't recall that from years.
Okay, well, if that's in there, I guess.
Oh, there it is, I found it. The last bit of that, that's on.
So nobody can put winter decorations, Christmas decorations out on.
Oh, no, it says that they can do winter wreaths, but they have to be removed by May first. So if they put winter decorations, they still have to take those off, it's bad.
It also says the recite could be removed by October.
No, uh, well, those are, those would be summer wreaths, yeah. So winter wreath would be a Christmas wreath.
And it keeps things from being supposedly just left out there for years and years, and you're going to, it's a, it keeps the fresh, you remove by any.
Okay, well then, um. If we don't have any further discussion on the cemetery ordinance, we should probably take a vote to send it to the lawyer with the corrections, if that's what we wanna do.
I'll make a motion that we approve it with the corrections and send it to the attorney.
I'll say it. Would you like to vote on that or?
Sure.
Do you want roll call or do you not?
Yeah, it's an ordinance, why not?
It's not, we're not adopting it, so.
Yeah. That's true. Not yet.
But if you want roll call, we can do roll call.
I don't think we need to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What for Carrie? Now, we got this big bad bear here, seven ten. Um, there was a memo on the, uh. Front of the septic ordinance, and when I received it, I don't know if everybody got that or not, but it's not, it's, I'm not sure, I just wanna read it to. Let everybody know where the septic ordinance came from and why we'd even do it. Okay, at the request of the planning commission, a septic ordinance subcommittee was formed to research the issue of septic regulation in the township. With the intent of developing an ordinance to better protect water quality and drinking water sources. Subcommittee presented a draft ordinance that the October planning commission made. The planning commission was reviewed. Has reviewed the draft ordinance and is recommending the township board use this draft as a basis for adoption of a septic ordinance for Kewahtah Township. Okay, by the. Okay, this is just some mumbo jumbo, uh, published in the newspaper when passed, but. Uh, I just wanted everybody to know, you know, why we're even talking about this, believe. Okay, um. Does anybody out there have a copy of what we're looking at or anything in that? Anybody like a copy of that? I would make copies, because this, you know, is pretty important stuff here, so. You don't have, second, there was an email. This one was two sided, not.
Yeah. If you got it on paper, you can give me just a beat, all day, or I won't spare it.
There's a paper, and then I'm just. One, five minute break maybe, and I'll run.
Motion to temporary adjournment?
Second. Everybody, all right, all right, I hear that.
Five minute temporary adjournment.
Yeah, I wanna make sure everybody sees this is. Big mark. What were you, see, I was, you referenced. Discussion about the cemetery. That is, uh.
The nine.
Yes. That was. They mentioned theirs, yeah. One point eight point sixty one. I just want you to say it, thank you.
Want to find where that's. Or.
Yeah, cause I'd like to find it too, I mean.
I, I don't have an issue with the baby, like, this forty eight, so what has, what has happened between the old ordinance and the new ordinance?
Does the resolution have been passed by?
Yeah, yeah.
What exactly between the two? Um, we don't have an issue. I mean, now I have an issue with that.
I don't.
Now I can't write, my, you know, the mortations in the cemetery, it's like crematorium, there are a lot of state laws. About cemeteries, so.
Yeah.
Like the thing there, it's not, I sprinkle above ground, my, that's the township, I mean, above. Like there's a lot, there's a lot of them too.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm sure that was something the planning commission looked into, like what is the law?
Yeah, we talked about it, you know, and there's, and, and actually, some, some, some things, there's not a vital part on our character, and it's, it's interesting how. Um, limited it is.
Very challenging.
Yeah.
And there's a lot.
You can, I mean, you can bury ashes above anywhere you want, you can't scatter them. In the cemetery, right, you know, the people, when they buy a cemetery lot, they're actually buying just the right to bury somebody, they're not buying a lot, so physically.
Yeah. I know even when you're young, you was born to have a celebration, like, like, maybe actually, like, so, and. You can't do that, I mean, what do you do at the stage, we cannot do that, you know? You know, and you can't sprinkle that, and I'm like, I can't sprinkle, so the actions of my sister, no, they should, I gotta, you know, we own that land. Yeah, you cannot do that, like, there's so much, but then there's also so much that they know that is what we hope for.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. But, yeah. Yeah, that's like, Frank said, that's probably one of the most violated laws up here, is where you can scatter, I mean, I. Can't imagine how many people have scattered in torchlight over the years.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a little, he's every. He wanted to be a.
But that happens all the time.
We put him in the hamstring, cause he wanted to claw all the way up to me and all the. And then we got to the fire and he wore his head.
I know, like, there's cemeteries, they don't let people put stuff all over, but they do have, um. Mausoleum, and they do allow, like, you know. Or, like, if somebody, like, guitars, if they can have, like. Seats like that along the outside of those. But then, you know, I guess they're easier to, than like the branches. They're more in part, now, we can, we can work in cities, that's somebody. They have a whole percentage, like, when they put the soft flowers in midterms. He comes in that first season, and we post them, and there's like a bench that's changed area. Outside of the house, and you go to all the old flowers, all long fence, so you go through and to all the old self flowers.
That's gotta be, you know, when it could be a flower, a wreath or whatever else it is. Kind of a night, when you go out there and mow or, you know, clean up leaves or whatever, you know, and.
Yeah, or if you have the management, if somebody, they're. Think they have to be. I think, and then they have a problem, because they. You go through, and there's, and they had to have the. Um, headstones, had to be splattered around. Yeah, and but there's that way from the time they bought it, and know that it can be very difficult in.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, um, one of them, how many were hired, and who did, so we went, or. Prior to the revolution, or.
So, uh, when can you come in the office and fill out paperwork? Uh, I have an eye appointment. Start out just ten hours a week, um, and then, I'll just, whenever that works out with Mark, right? Yeah. So, you guys don't have to work out a schedule for that, it's kind of all over the place.
Take less, you know?
So much to learn, and that's why we needed at least two months, we had to work with her.
Yeah, well, I just, I went through the training, because I worked the election, but I'd never done that part of it before.
Yeah.
And that was a lot. Yeah, so it's gonna be.
I went through the training and I walked away going, I have no idea. I went through the training, but I really don't know.
And then when I was watching, because I did, like, after to close, and the closing part, that was really interesting. And all that stuff, and some of it actually stuck, so.
Pulling all the reports.
Yeah.
Pulling out all the paperwork, separating all the documents. A lot of that, that is all on your election chairs and inspectors. So, we just make sure that. They're there, and they're doing it, and kind of trust our. Chair, she knows, but, and Jewel Moore has been the chair for forever.
She was really.
She knows.
Really kind and very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's been, I mean, she was a clerk, and then she was election chair.
Yeah.
It's all.
And the ladies that I worked with, you know, they had done some doing that in years too, so.
Yeah.
You know, I just always wanna get to that point where, I know too. It takes time.
So there's a lot more, that's the, the on the floor.
Yeah, right.
And how that, right, so now the background, behind the scenes, the beforehand, the absentee ballots, the qualified voter file.
So that's gonna be interesting, because I wasn't exposed to any of that, so, it's gonna put all the. Muzzle pieces together, it's pretty cool, I'm excited about it, thank you very much.
Well, this is just a, uh, if you look in the door, you might.
Uh, yeah. Alright, going back to order, it's about the little delay there. Police power ordinance. Pretty powerful stuff. Okay.
I don't think we're gonna get through it, if there's some.
Don't think so.
Half an hour.
We're trying to get everybody out of here, at least in my two hours.
Well, we might, I mean, it's pretty well laid out.
That is true, but that's. I'll just give everybody a minute or so, if anybody's wanting to read it or look through it for a few minutes here. But we started going through it, I haven't made any notes on this.
It was sent to the health department.
Okay.
And they added, um, I, I had the, we had the red line copy, it was what they added.
You round the committee that.
Yeah, Sue Kelly and I, we committed to. Anyway, but it was Sue sent it to the health department, and they added things, and they looked through it all. Um, to see if it would meet their standards, and so that's, they were the last, um, approval. And we took, um, many, we looked at all the ones in the different region, and we kind of took the best thing. And we didn't reinvent the.
So in your opinion, you're pretty satisfied with what you have here?
Yes, we're, we're very satisfied, Sue did most of the, um, type.
The thing is called pleasure.
Well, they will, we would be not reinventing sunlight mark.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, then, since you guys were both on the committee, um. What, um, if any, are, are items that maybe we're not consistent with what the county's doing? You know, are we like a little more restrictive, or are we?
In some ways, it's more, first of all, this covers individuals that were within five hundred feet of a body of water. The Calcasca one covers everyone in Clearwater Township. It covers an inspection of the well and the septic, with the exception of the purchase sir, can waive that inspection. This would, oh, this then would step in for those individuals.
And say they have to.
Within five hundred feet of the water and say, oh, no, you can't override it. The, past the five hundred feet, they could still override that Calcasca ordinance. But if you're within five hundred feet of a body of water in Clearwater Township, you wouldn't be able to override that, you'd have to follow this one. And the short term rental, um, would have to follow this one. If you reference that, this referenced in the short term rental ordinance, this ordinance. To follow as far as what you'd want to do for septic, because I know in the short term rental, it talks about that. So that is, um, and the five hundred feet, um, the, there were some that said three hundred. Someone that said five hundred, and, uh, Sue and I went with the five hundred.
Um, when you say five hundred feet of a body of water, is that like Torch River, Torch Lake, Skeet Mug, and Rapid Rivers, or any other?
Torch, so it'd be Torch Lake, can be any, any body of water that's in, um, in Clearwater Township. Cause they're all, um, you know, tributaries that end up.
So, not necessarily the property. Um, like, if I had a piece of property, it was six hundred feet long, but I had my house in septic in that last hundred feet, this would not apply.
House in septic, the septic would have to be within five.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah.
No matter where the house is.
Right, yeah.
Anything to add, sir? Anything to add?
I mean, I, I think it's good or at least. I think it was crafted for Clearwater Township. Or the town of Montechon County are drafted by the Northwestern, um. Health Department of Michigan, and presented to the townships, that's how they operate. Torch Lake Township was the most strict, no, they released that a little long. So we did those changes, and then, um, Mr. Box took a couple of looks at it, and then a few times. And just put in whatever he said he needed to see, and that's what we did, so I think it's. Our custom Clearwater Township ordinance, and you're unique. Not, not like in, similar but different.
Qualified service, would that just be a septic, any septic company, or is that like a specific title?
The, um, health department has. There it is, right there, that, they are, that has to be one of them, one of those that.
One of those people on that list.
Yeah, right.
Then the, the requirements in here, the forms, the. Providers that you need to use, all of that is what you would get from the public health department, just to kind. Um, identity, we just use those for simplicity. And it's the same point of sale operation, it's just going to be geared towards. More homes until we can. Get all of the ladder properties. Unless you, unless, and, and, you know, unless it's been pumped, and unless it's been new, and unless it's, you know, there's areas exclusion. And we must tighten those out a little bit from what we had from, he was like, mm-hmm, you're gonna be five years, you'll be three.
So, uh, getting back to this qualified service, then, like, some people that work at some of these septic companies. May be on that list as qualified individuals to do that, so if you're having your septic pumped and looked at by a service company. Um, just suggesting now, we would have to have another person come and certify it, other than the person that.
That's you've had it done over the last three years, or if it's been replaced since last time, I think those are the things.
Yeah. So if you were having the septic pumped. And you want, and it hadn't been inspected in a while, it would behoove you. To have it inspected, and have, in most of the local ones.
That's really what I was trying to get at, is, are we waiting on a government person?
The next time, and I just expect it at the same time, because most of them do, and it will save you money.
So five hundred feet is kind of longer than a football field, than away from the water.
Almost two.
Yeah.
It's gonna encompass a lot of people, like across the street, um, like. Um, Crystal Beach.
On the.
Filmed to the road. And a lot of them, the septics are in the front yard, that's where they're. But a lot of that filters, like.
All the reasons I like the five hundred foot is that, uh, a lot of our waterfront agent moving away from. But it doesn't, it doesn't build very fast, it stays low, so there's a lot of, a lot of residences that are close together. And they're also on a, on a area of, of high water table. And, of course, we get one hundred percent of our drinking water, this township comes from the groundwater, so. I, I like going back a little bit further from the lake to cover those areas of high density. To have those inspected, just to hopefully ensure the quality of our water supply.
Someone, um, mentioned to me earlier today, he may or may not, um, want me to mention his name or whatever, but. If we adopt this, and we, you know, choose to make this a viable ordinance and that. And then say five years, ten years down the road, after we've made people comply and do different things. You know, to upgrade or whatever, and then we decide we're gonna go to a sewer system. You know, I'm just. Curious if this is needed, if we are, you know, ultimately, I think we're going to have a sewer system at some point. But I don't know, you know, our timeframe.
That'll be within the city tougher, not very, out along the lake, right?
I think it could be on the lake.
I'll speak on that, because I, I talked to you on that, so I guess where this comes from is Gary Schechter can be a great resource, but. I know Torch Lake, um. Association there for Torch Lake, um, was also a part of it, and I don't know, it was fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. But Torch, the whole Torch chain of lakes had a sewer system planned. And my understanding is, people were upset, because it's gonna cost to use the sewer system, it's not gonna be free. But they're upset because they had to upgrade their sewer system, or their septic system. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, so we're gonna make people upgrade their septic system.
And then more.
Looked into the, because Gordon Fraser had it all designed. So I guess, has that just been forgotten about? Is that still a possibility? But it was all government funded, it wasn't a cost. Anybody to actually put it in. My understanding was the people that are gonna use it that were very upset. So, I just wanted to know.
I can bring some clarity to a little bit of that, I was the president of TLPA sixteen years ago. And we were not involved in that, I don't know where Gary, I know Gary. And I don't know who all of he was working with, or the lake associations, we're not involved in that. We were approached, and maybe this is what he's thinking, there was a, um, an effort from some of the businesses. And, um, Alden, who, and Alden Biels was at the time, and the Martinton, um. He wanted to expand, and they, uh, the septics are rated based on the number of seats that you have in your facility. When food operations, so, um, they, they didn't have any place. Where they could put the expanded septic, so they were not allowed to expand the business, and that, um, debuted as a.
Negative.
And, and they did approach TLPA and asked, and probably other associations. And asked if we would help them to try and put something together. We briefly looked into the cost of that, and I don't know if you've ever done that. I can't see that happening in Clearwater Township in my lifetime. To delay this in anticipation. That something fifteen years down, the other ten years, twenty years down the road could happen. I think it's egregious and stupid.
Well, I wasn't necessarily saying that we should.
And I did do some of the research back fifteen years ago.
Okay.
And I believe, oh, sorry.
He had his hand up.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe the, um, what Gary's talking about, it entailed the town of Alden, and they were gonna, and they, they did give a grant for that. And it was mostly the residents that didn't want it, they, it. And I, I don't know the details of why they didn't end up doing it, but it really would have embraced it. It was mostly for the town of Alden, because those businesses now suffer, because they don't have the. And they couldn't, they were gonna pump it all the way up to the top. And they couldn't, they were gonna pump it all the way up to the top of the hill and it was gonna be. But I didn't know where else it went, other than that, that area, I, I don't know anything about it ever being down here. But I do agree that if it's not in the master plan right now, and it's not eminent to even look at. I mean, we're talking a long time, and that, that's a lot of shit, excuse me.
Uh we do have one comment from somebody online, Seth Phillips.
What Seth?
Uh thank you, hi, uh I'm the county drain commissioner, for those who don't know. Uh and I've been involved in working on this septic regulation issue in the area for about twenty years. Um and we struggle to make progress, so I'm very encouraged that you folks are talking about a local ordinance. Um I've been very involved in working at the um efforts on creating a state level. Program for regulating septics, as we are the only state in the country that does not have one. And for a state that's so defined by water, that's just hard for me to wrap my brain around. But I've seen a lot of the data that indicates the problems that septic systems are causing in Michigan waterways. Um MSU did a study that showed of every river in the lower peninsula that showed every single one of them. Was suffering from human sourced E. coli contamination and septic systems were the only possible source. So um regulating septic systems in some fashion and try to prevent that is clearly necessary. The five hundred foot um isolation that your uh effective distance you're talking about is consistent. With the current drafts of state legislation. Um although, who knows what'll happen in Lansing these days. Uh we've had bills introduced now for three state sessions that have never passed. Um and the problem is big and it's expensive and I understand the difficulties in doing that. Um but um I certainly want to encourage you and I commend those of you who have worked on this. Uh to, to see this as a positive, the county's point of sale ordinance. Touches, but just a small fraction of the septic systems that are out there. Because it only deals with properties that are actually for sale. Uh and there are lots of septic systems, obviously, that aren't. Uh and tying it to your um short term rental ordinance. Uh is also a relevant issue, we've talked about a lot at the state level. Um because septic systems are only designed to handle a certain amount of, of occupancy in a home. And the problem with short term rentals, of course, is that you frequently exceed that. Uh a home that has a capacity for four or eight people might have twelve or fifteen people at a short term rental. And the septic systems aren't designed to handle that, so you get all kinds of problems from overuse, over. Over discharge for what the systems can handle. So um and I'm available always to talk to people and handle questions and stuff, but I want to. Offer those thoughts for you in looking at the bigger issue and commend you for considering working on this and encourage you. Um because God only knows what the state's gonna do. Uh in trying to regulate this, and in the meantime, we need local governments who care to step up, so that's my comment. And thank you for letting me.
Sure, uh while we're here, is there anybody on Zoom that may have something they wanna share or something, just some added information or anything? No? Okay, uh one thing I wanna um say, and I kinda just learned this myself. I think it's kinda strange that I didn't know, but. Ryan was explaining to me a little bit about um. That the solids in the septic system would remain in your, in your septic uh. Tank and just the gray water would be pumped away, so.
That's not so, that's not so, that's not so. When they pump a septic tank, they pump all of the stuff out of there.
I was talking about if we were to actually get a sewer system.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, so is then that true that we would only be processing the gray water and the tanks would still require pumping periodically?
I would, I would assume if you create a sewer system that the septic systems will be disconnected. From the homes and you'll be directly connected to sewers, so once you pump out the septic tank, then you won't have to deal with it again.
Okay, I stand corrected, I, I guess I unlearned that today, yeah.
Free on up lake that are all signs, aims to air, and it's just gray water that gets pumped a mile and a half down the road.
Alright, well then I didn't learn that today, so good.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Florida has been dealing with this a long time, one of the biggest towns is Cape Coral, they have canals in it. You could build a brand new house, brand new septic, brand new well. When they bring in the public utilities, it's called an assessment. Fifteen grand to get hooked up. No matter how old your septic is, you're hooking up or not. So now what happens is people get a map of the assessment and where they're coming in. So let's say people are buying here, 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 so they don't have to deal with the assessment being hooked up. Cause that's not scheduled till twenty thirty or whatever. When shenanigans happen where they look and say, we just sold three hundred houses in this area. That are out of the assessment zone, so they rezone the assessment to come into that area. So now all those people who just paid for brand new houses, brand new septic's and brand new wells have to hook up. So I don't think delaying this in any way is smart, because we gotta make sure at least our septic. You know, I don't care whether you're renting, I don't care what you're doing. We all know it's Michigan, we all value our waterways, so we definitely gotta keep them clean. How fast we gotta rush, cause of the people down in Lansing, I don't know, but those people down in Lansing could. Do things that might make your ordinance a little bit obsolete by the time the law comes down. But for now, I think, you know, everybody wants clean water, who's gonna do the septic inspection, who's paying for it, all that, you know?
Uh again, I wasn't asking that we delay it, but I wanted to. Because, you know, it's potentially. Okay, any other comments from any of the board members or anything like this that are listening?
Or we could ask them how.
I have to say, looking through this, I really didn't see anything that I really strongly object to. Uh and I think it's probably gonna save our water and a lot of different. Ways, obviously won't fix everything, but. It uh, it is a start. I'm glad that you worked with the Health Department when you constructed this, cause I don't wanna be in conflict with them, obviously.
I don't have any question on it.
Is the fee scheduled for this in here? So we're, we need to come up with the cost that we wanna charge people?
The homeowner case for their inspection.
I was curious of. I guess the inspection would be, cost would be from the inspectors.
Do that list of inspectors available?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I, I can give you this one.
Okay, what, I mean, is it online, has it done?
We, we must pay the team, it said the health department might be on there. I just asked.
I can make some copies real quick if you want.
How it works is, that list is at the Health Department, so what happens is the, the Health Department. You contract, so. The contracted entity kinda takes over for you, when you're gonna do that. You contract directly with them, the Health Department just oversees the process, so you pay them. And they kinda get all the, they get all the. Right, so you would get the list from the Health Department, you call, let's say you call the motors or whatever. They then get the permits from the Health Department, they do everything, and then they give you a whole inspection packet. It shows you with the pictures and everything of what they have found and that you passed or what you need to correct and then. And that's how that works, I just watched the one in Alden be done at the uh park, that's what I do in my spare time. They showed me exactly how, and they walked me through, they work with the other Health Department, but they walked me through exactly how.
So there is no township fee and uh we're just gonna, at the point of sale or the yearly, three yearly or five yearly, whatever. They're just gonna bring us that packet or a copy of it, and that be our requirement? We're not, we don't have any special form or anything to fill out or.
You wanna do, have the, the co- Health Department will have, they have, we, we use theirs once. As, as Truce said, if the homeowner. Gets notified, there will be work to do in terms of the township to. Um sign as the um. Creator of the notification, so let's say, let's say I've got waterfront property. And my septic is uh twenty years old. And so when, and there's a survey, they talk about in here, they have to open their records and. Identify pieces of property that are within that waterfront basin. And they're gonna provide that with the notice letter and that you all would ship that out. So you're gonna send me a letter that says my system is due for an inspection, I have three years to get that done. At that three year period, I've got any period of time within there, I would go to the Health Department, say I need to have it inspected. Here's your list of folks that you can use, I call them and as Truce said, they take it from there. They take, they're the ones that inter, that interject with the Health Department throughout the rest of that. They're the ones that give the information to the Health Department, we boss's responsibility is to write the report for the owner. Um and the only time that there is. You know, the big bad, there, there's gonna be a lot of expenses is if that system's failing. And a system failure is ethylene on top of the soil or backing of it or not. So if your toilets aren't flushing, you probably should know that you have a problem. And if you've got ethylene on your yard, you probably know you have a problem. And that's gotta be fixed. So those are the, and so they're like emergent like issues.
So when we pass this, then everybody within five hundred feet of a lake or body of water, whatever. Is gonna get that notice from us that they have three years to comply or?
The Health Department has to do the survey of their record.
So we would get the list from the Health Department of the homeowners that need to be notified?
That is the way I was explaining it.
And then it would be our responsibility to notify homeowners.
But when you say the Health Department's gonna give us a list of people that, you know, need to comply or whatever. Is that because they're within the five hundred feet or because it, maybe they just had a new septic system and they're not on the list? Because there's within the three or five year period?
The exemptions are clear, the, the determination for an exemption is made by Mr. Health Department on the time. This is, this is very much rest for. Mr. Box. And so if you've, if you've got. If it's been evaluated um within the confines of the ordinance. Within five years prior to the passage of the service and you have an exception. If it's determined that there's been a newer replacement and some promises in the last ten years before this gets adopted. Then you get an exception. But clients at the one time. Does not necessarily waive the, the point of sale requirement. If it's again outside of the five, five hour time here. This is all contingent of the putting your nose up for sale though, right? And not if you have within five hundred.
Does that include refers to, so what if, and this is a lot of scenario, what if somebody who is a horse. Puts up an area where they have their horse clothes and though that area is less than five hundred feet. From um of waterfronts.
This does not have, this does not address like animal.
Experiments, so we can eliminate human experiment, but not.
Well, that would be a whole other ordinance, I believe, because there's, you don't even get me started on about what's going on with. Baller stuff, then they're spreading septic stuff, they're spreading. So sometimes septic systems are better than sewer, if you don't know what you're gonna do with it after it's all done. Cause it's being spread over seven farms in this area. So that's a whole other issue.
I'm sure they have permits for that, though, right?
Oh, yeah, they have permits, eagle get family permits, but. Well, it's just because it's okay, is it ethically okay? Yeah, there you go. So anyway, I was gonna tell you since announced about, oh, one of the things at the state, because I've been following that for years with tip of the myth. And they, it gets really close and then it gets shut down and one of the things. Some of the Health Departments are overloaded, I mean, this is a lot of work for them. So if it gets a statewide, there's a statewide septic. Then the Health Departments are gonna need more help to be able to monitor all that. And I just found a committee with some of the Health Departments and they're worried that if the state does pass that. That they won't have the capacity to really be able to do that, so. Um I was happy that the Health Department was, went along, I mean, they didn't push back on us doing this, they wanted us to do it. Cause I talked to some other officials that, it, it will be, it will be more work for them, but in the end, it's, it's healthier people. Clean water's in.
Um if I can just interject something here. There's two basic components to this, one is upon sale, the other one is if you're within five hundred feet of your property's, uh about five hundred feet of a body of water. For the point of sale, just like the one in Calcasas, with the exception of you can't opt out. The requirement to notify the, the property owner rests with the real estate agent. Just like it does the net. Or the body of water section of this. Though that's under the one time baseline inspection, the section of this survey. The survey is, the tech or the Health Department will do a survey of their permits. That's where that list will come from in terms of mapping that out. And, and they will also, if no record exists, that name is gonna show up. Because they need, they need to know where it is, and that's what gives you the. Three years of after notification by the township, so you're gonna give that notice. Either, either we know there's people there, we don't have any thing that shows that they've got a septic. Or these are the people that we have septic and they're within your um area here. And then the township has the responsibility to notify non-compliant owners. And you would learn that from the Health Department. Is that how?
So the question is who in the township is gonna be responsible for managing this and enforcing it?
Well, um I have another thing too, why, why just surround body water within five hundred feet? And the reason I ask this is. I can go and daze or damn near and dig down two feet with a shovel to fill a water. I can go to my dad's house, five miles from you guys, and dig down two feet and it fills with water. For the water table, the formation and the numbers like that, so it's pretty, it's pretty important in my eyes. To just cherry pick the five hundred feet from a body of water, because the, the water table is close to the ground in many different spots in the township.
You know what I'm asking, I think it was just, I don't understand, you know, you get some giant thing that. I don't understand either, you know, that you can drive through this.
Hmm.
Um, there's, there's not, there's not any other examples of that in, in Antun or Calcasas County.
But it still goes to the groundwater.
That's a great, and if you wanted to, if you wanted to stretch that one time baseline for over five hundred feet and just made it for the county. I'm not gonna earn you.
No, I'm just saying, it just seems. If something like this is or were to go through, I mean, that's. It's almost like a targeting.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, go ahead Seth.
Thank you. Um, and we've had that discussion a lot at the state legislative level. Because the reality is what you say is correct. All septic systems pose that risk. Um, but we also had to look at what the workload looks like. And how, how impactful regulation would be. I mean, there's one point three million septic systems in the state. If we imposed a statewide requirement for inspection on all of them, it's a workload nobody can handle. So we had to set some priorities on what was the most important. Uh, what posed the greatest risk? And given the impact on surface waters, that sort of five hundred foot limit. Uh, was kinda where we ended up as these are likely to be the most significant risks uh, that we present. Um, and eventually we'll need to talk about the others. But um, we were sort of looking at that as a, for something for a later date. If that helps.
Hmm. Okay, um, obviously we're not gonna get through all this today. We haven't even really talked about the well and the water supply stuff, so.
And what's gonna?
Yeah, just to maybe push off. Is um, how deep do you want septic permeates? You have an idea on that Seth? How, how deep uh, septic uh, waste goes down into?
Well, it's, it's so variable. It's all dependent on soils. Um, I mean, you know, it's uh, and septic system design from the health department is based on isolation to groundwater. So like where I live, my groundwater table's really high. Uh, and so I have to have a mound drain system. Some people do that. Um, and. Uh, you know, if, if you're somewhere where it's all Calcasas sand, our wonderful state soil. Uh, it's gonna go down a ways further than if you into more loamy clay kinda stuff. So it's very septic dependent.
My question was that because I, I'm pretty sure um, water wells now is thirty five feet of ground casing, my heart.
Yeah.
Might just end up going that deep.
Um, generally speaking, design would, uh, like where I live on Manistee Lake and. My septic system's gonna go into the most shallow aquifer system and my well is much deeper than that.
Yeah.
Um, so you know, and, and hopefully health department permitting. Uh, usually takes that sort of thing into account. Plus they have an isolation requirement between the well and the septic system.
Hmm.
But there's no guarantee. Some people's wells can be impacted. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Well, there's definitely more discussion, um, you know, how, how we enact and enforce this. But I, I would take the motion that we approve this being sent to the attorney for review.
Hmm.
I have further discussion.
I think.
You don't want the attorney to look at it first?
My, really likes Lee or his supervisor from District Ten to attend meeting for questions as well.
Motion resented then.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, especially with the wells and that, we, we need to at least discuss it with people and allow some input, you know? Um. So I, I would be ready to send this to the attorney myself.
You're working?
I wouldn't be.
Oh, you wouldn't?
No. I would also, like Bob mentioned, maybe at another point, if we were to have maybe at least one more meeting here and, and maybe invite Lee to attend and. You know, a.
Another special meeting?
I think it's almost. Necessary.
Oh, we still need to ask your short, short term rental anyways, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be working on few ordinances for uh, probably a couple of months, I'm thinking.
It's best to get it right and we have everyone have buy-in than to just, to just rush it. I mean, that's my opinion. I think more people.
I agree.
I mean, just sending it to the attorney is just to have them review it. That's like, we're ready to adopt it, not at all.
And I think that there will be a problem to send it to the attorney now. I think that's.
Yeah.
But it has to go to them anyways, so.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right, well, um, I was gonna pull a calendar up here, but um, I. I'm curious if anybody on the board would like to have a meeting prior to or after our next regular. Yeah, so late November, although we did late October.
Yeah.
You wanna set the date now or wait till the regular meetings?
Yeah.
I'd like to talk to Lee, see if I can get him to attend, so.
I'd like it to be after he attends. That's what he wants to do.
Um, why don't I do this? Why don't I talk to Lee? And have him supply a couple of dates in late November that he could attend and maybe we can invite him. Seth, you're welcome to be there too.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Excluding the week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna give us turkey dinner, right?
We're gonna have some. But everybody will sleep at the meeting, then we'll get right through it.
We'll just pump turkey smell in the room.
Do you know the difference in the race is maybe the inspectors who are allowed to inspect the yard?
You like to call it.
Did you hear, got through the list?
It would be that.
Yeah, I think I've seen that on the District Ten Health.
Is that a business in itself and people and there are people that require so many of them? If the town board knows that this is the man that we recommend. Because this is what he charges for expected, doesn't mean they have to use that.
It would be a homeowner's choice, not.
Yeah, that's right. I think if they're on the list, it's up to the homeowner.
Yeah.
Remark it. You wanna hear that from Lee or some?
I think so, yeah. Okay, so we'll not set the meeting for November yet, but I will get with Lee and get a couple of dates that he potentially could be available. And um. Maybe in the meantime, we can. Look over some of the well stuff and the water supply stuff and, you know, be ready to discuss it, I guess.
Yes.
All right.
All right, uh, there is another opportunity for public comment if anybody.
I, I have public comment.
There, Dave.
And it, and it might be more aligned questions after what I just heard. So possibly a public uh, hearing would be a good venue. These things, but I, I am a little surprised by some of this and. To understand that the health department is actually gonna do all of this work. They're gonna do the surveys. And they're gonna provide a list to the township. They're gonna, they're gonna do all this research. And then. After a homeowner gets notified. Those reports are gonna go to the, the health department and then the health department is gonna examine each report. Contact the homeowner and tell them what they feel the results of the report are. Is that what I understand to be correct?
I, I think you're just a little bit off there. I think the homeowner is notified be, well, first of all. Five hundred feet of the water uh, table or water source, yeah, um. Or the point of sale is.
Apply the list.
Yeah, but there, there's only those two things on the list.
Right.
Okay, so that's really not that much research. I mean, they. Can pull that up on GIS probably five hundred feet thing pretty easily. We do it for, you know.
For mailing.
Yeah, yeah.
Holds up pretty easy, I think.
Yeah, and then the other thing would be the ones that have had recent work done or they're recently inspected or whatever, so they could pop off the list, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that would be that much research for them, really.
But absolutely, that's it. Then the homeowner, so the, the health department, they're going to examine the report from the independent contractors. And then they're going to tell the, the homeowner what needs to be done or what the results are.
I think that's between the homeowner and the inspector.
It's not the inspector, it's not the homeowner, but the results of it.
Okay.
And that, that report does go to the health department. But the inspector is gonna be the one that's gonna tell them. Like, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna give you the report.
What, what does the health department do with that then?
What's the?
The report.
If there's, um, the report is filed and they show that you've had an inspection and you passed. And that's in their records. If it doesn't pass, then you go on a list and sometimes it could be bad enough that they will, like. You condemn your house. The health department does that. And then you have to get it fixed. And then give that to the health department to show that you, but it's gonna be your contractor that's gonna do all that. You're gonna, your contractor's gonna find out what's wrong. Your contractor's gonna fix it. And then they're going to send that report. That it's been fixed.
To them.
To the health department. It's once, it's really the homeowner, once they contract with the contractor that's approved by the health department. You don't, the homeowners are not gonna do anything until that point, until they're notified that there's something they have to change. The contractor will inspect it, run the report, give the report to the health department. And if it says you're good to go, you're good to go. The only time you really have to do anything is if you have. At a, basically a fail set.
Now, don't they currently know, um, don't they currently at point of sale require a septic inspection?
Calcasas County requires a septic and one inspection at point of sale, what the um, purchaser can raise that.
Okay, so they can choose that it failed.
Right.
But we don't care.
Well, they won't even know that because they won't have an inspection. They've just taken the chance. So then. This, if you're within five hundred feet, this ordinance then overrides that because it's more stringent. So then you can't, you know, if you're buying a house on the lake and you suspect it, and you don't want, you don't care. You don't wanna wait for the inspection. You want it to float. You want the house. Well, that's all fine and good. You don't have to have a Calcasas one. You sign a waiver. You do have to have this one. So you're still. Yes, you're still buying.
Feet.
Cause you're, unless they're on record that shows that that's already been within the last three years that it's been inspected, then you don't have to do it.
Um, any other public comment?
To clarify, um, when I was in, there's. Specific things that he requires from, I mean, these. You don't have this list of approved contractors and anybody signs up. They have to follow his protocol. They have to. Provide the information and the data that he requests.
Hmm.
Um, so there's a whole, I don't know, like he kind of alluded to a training type program that he does with the companies. Uh, the individuals. They gather, uh, they do the inspection and Trucey said, they gather a lot of that up. They put it all in the format that he requires. At this juncture, the way this is drafted, he writes the report. That was his. Putting in.
Hmm.
He did tell me that should the. Report writing workbook become ordinance? He wanted you guys to know that he would be willing to train. People on the, the inspectors on the list to do the report to meet the requirements. If, if that was okay with you. They, they, he would be willing to do that training. For the township.
So, so really the only responsibility of the township board is to do the initial notification. Everything else falls on the health department?
The initial notification and then my guess is to follow up on that three years.
And the health department which any contractors to finish that for?
And what happens when the people who are notified, um, what if they're. They can't afford to have it fixed? They ultimately are going to face condemnation, their property.
They have, that there are grants. For like, by the health department and um, we just actually had a bit of. There, there are grants that will help them. Cause most health, most that they, they can't get some, they're failed, they're failed, you have to get a new one. But there is a grant and I will give that information to you because my brain is failing me tonight. I know, I just read it and um, I have it in my file now. That they can apply and what it is, is a low interest loan. That they'll do for the homeowner so that they can get their septic fixed so they can live in their house. And I, it, it may be in the state of Michigan, I hear. I just listened to the Eagle Septic Seminar last week, um, and they went through all that and it's in the slide stack of that one.
And so like we have to have an attorney make sure that it's not streaming to your.
You're not gonna. You're not gonna. Fail unless your septic is failing. That's defined two ways, as I hope.
Mm-hmm.
You got ethyl in your yard and your toilet's still flush. You got a backing up in your home. Yeah, you need to get that. You need, you need a new septic. And that's when you would need to go. I mean, I don't know who or how many people might be actually living in those conditions. The rest of it, you could have a system that maybe, maybe, maybe it's almost failing. Maybe it's. I don't know, thirty five years old or whatever. And the inspector says, yeah, you know, you got some, these pipes don't look like they're doing so good. Or that gravel doesn't look like it's doing so good. You're probably gonna need to have a new one in a few years. They're not gonna shut you down. They're not gonna come down your house. They're not gonna ask you to move. They're gonna tell you, probably have to think about getting something in a few years. Um, now whether you do that or whether you wait for it to fail, that's. Could be our. You know, people will be reasonable.
Right.
So I got a fence around my property. I'm selling my house. Selling it as it is. My house is not within five hundred feet of a waterway. Am I abiding to follow this ordinance on this?
Not this ordinance and you can waive the county.
When you sell.
Get these within the five hundred.
Purchaser can.
A lot.
But, but it's the purchaser that waves.
You can wait. You can't wait. What you, whether you're selling it as is does not matter through Calcasas County. The, when you're selling it, it's a point of sale. The person that's buying it can assign a waiver. And you can, I, and say, I don't want the inspection. If you're not within five hundred.
Thanks, Sarah.
Any other public comment? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if anybody wants to make it.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, just one question.
Caught me up on the lot.